We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on March 19th, 2024 to order at 3:03 PM. Sorry, we're a couple of minutes late. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of our agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you are here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary, staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know and we can distribute those. And if you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item? Seeing no one is registered to speak, we will now recess the regular session and convene the work session with a report from our city manager.
Counsel and public, we have a pretty full work session scheduled today. I think there's 170 total slides. So I'll keep my manager's report pretty brief. We have no changes to the agenda, and I'd like to take a couple of minutes to talk about employee recognition items to start. First off, I spent about three weeks away from the city under medical leave and back now. And a lot of people didn't realize I was gone, which is a good sign. And it's a good sign because we have a great leadership team. And so I wanted to give a shout out to the directors and leadership team, and particularly for Deputy City Manager Emerson for leading meetings and leading the staff and leading the meetings while it really allowed me the space I needed. And glad to be back, but also glad to be in service, which such a great crew of people makes it real special to serve in my role. Additionally, staff recognition, wanted to speak to the team that's in the back of the room. In late February, we deployed four of our fire department members to assist up in North Texas. Yeah, we've got some pictures shown on the screen there in what ended up being the state's largest wildfire in history up near Amarillo. Our team was involved in fighting the Wendy Deuce Fire, which burned well over 100,000 acres. And that was just southwest of the Smokehouse Creek Fire, which burned over a million acres. So I want to say thanks to Captain John Fogel, as well as Engineer Craig Camp, who deployed on our brush truck, as well as Engineer Dalton Keen and firefighter Frank Brown, who deployed with an additional strike team on Hewitt's Engine One for structural protection. I'm talking houses, right? These are people's lives that we're up serving with. Also, a special thanks to Executive Deputy Chief Robbie Bergerson. He actually coordinates the resources for 13 counties in central Texas as part of the Texas Interstate Fire Mutual Aid System. It's called TIFMS. And ultimately, he rostered units from Waco, Colleen, Temple, Hewitt, Morgan's Point, and Moffett to assist in what's just turned out to be an incredible disaster. So I wanted to give a round of applause to our team that went up that way.
Thank you. I want to also thank our staff for an amazing job. Deputy City Manager, who led the team so well, as well as all of our team who, you know, it's just, we're so blessed in this city to have such a competent, strong staff, and I'm thankful for that. And to our fire team, thank you so much for representing our city and for your sacrifice, for the love and care of your fellow man. And it's not unnoticed, I think, you know, we know we have that ISO-1 rating because of your excellence, but also because of your character. So thanks for all you do for our city and for those around the state.
We have four public hearings today. Clint Peters, Director of Development Services, is going to provide an update on a few of those, hopefully during the work session, if we have time. If not, he'll cover those during the business session. We have a total of 43 resolutions on the agenda today. A lot of great work. I'll highlight just real quickly the two ordinances. Ordinance 188 adds a new section governing the usage of the official city flag, seal, and logo. If you haven't, if you're tuning in online, if you've not seen the city flag, you'll notice it behind the council to the right. Ordinance 189 adopts the 2024 Water Conservation Drought and Contingency Plans for the City of Waco. We're going to discuss that plan in detail in the work session. Lisa Tyer, Director of Utilities, is here to provide a presentation on that item and talk through the details of the plan. Certainly be able to take your questions during that work session. Mayor and Counsel, that concludes my report for today, and I'll take any comments or questions from you now.
I just want to comment just 15 seconds on one resolution. That's number 32. If you're following it, Helms, on page 442, Resolution 175, really 176, too. 175 specifically, as I'm going to all these neighborhood association meetings these last six, seven months, a lot of feedback I get is on not only street repair, but sidewalk repair. And this one is a quarter mile of sidewalk we're getting where we have got tapped into the state fund to help us pay for 80% of it. So these are the kind of, we're trying to get these projects done throughout the city for sidewalks and streets. And this is a good example of us taking advantage of a state-level program to help fund sidewalks. And this was actually done through metropolitan planning organization, of which my fellow council member, Borderoute, is chairman. I tried to get this done while I was chairman, but I didn't quite get it done. Josh had to carry the water there. But anyway, these kind of projects, I think, are important from a funding perspective and also just a neighborhood improvement and quality of life perspective as we can get these sidewalks put in. That's all I had.
Any other questions or comments? All right. The consent agenda will include Let's just move to the first work session, and I'll come back to the consent agenda. Sorry about that.
Call it. I think there's one ASI is all you're looking for.
Yes, Mayor. Item 2024-154 will be voted on separately.
Consent agenda includes 2024-144 through 186. Other than 154, are there any other items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure. It's Work Session 131. It's going to be a discussion of our upcoming bond sales and refunding. That's on your agenda this evening. We'll discuss debt service, as well as the proposed projects to fund, welcoming up Nick Sarpy, our Chief Financial Officer, to the table, as well as our financial advisory firms, PFM Advisors and TGL. They'll be discussing the details. But before they get started, Mayor and Counsel, I would like to highlight that this will be Nick's last presentation with us. Mr. Sarpy is moving on to City of Little Rock to serve as their Chief Financial Officer in Arkansas, and his last day will be, I believe, Friday. Nick, I've mentioned this to you already in a different setting, but I'm grateful for the work you've done here, and I'm glad to have served with you. You've led this finance team through a really fun period of time. And you've served us well, you've served me well, and I wish you the very best in Little Rock, and I know the council does as well. So y'all grill them as much as you like. Ready for it, I'm certain. Mayor and Counsel, one item of note on this work session, you may have noticed that Ordinance 187 is an emergency reading item. It's associated with Nick's move to Little Rock. After Friday, Paul Kane, our Assistant City Manager, will serve as the interim CFO. And so Item 187 allows him to sign checks and serve as the interim CFO. Nick, I'll turn it over to you to introduce the rest of the team.
All right. Mayor and Counsel, thank you so much. So as Bradley mentioned, we're here to present the 2024 CIP and Bond Financing Program. With me today, and we'll do most of the talking, Blake Roberts from PFM, and then Adrian Galván from TGL. So with that, I will gladly turn it over to them.
Thanks, Nick. Mayor, City Council, good to be with y'all this afternoon. My name is Blake Roberts with PFM.
My name's Adrian Galván with the firm of TGL. Great to be here.
So we were jointly hired as the city's co-financial advisors out of an RFP process several months ago. And this represents sort of the planning in advance of your annual bond sale. It's been a lot of work to get to this point. We'll offer you several pieces of information about what we're asking you to authorize today, and give some background information in terms of the next steps in the planning phase and execution of your bond sale. So at a high-level overview, you're being asked to consider the approval of a resolution authorizing the notice of intention to issue up to 270 million of tax-exempt and taxable certificates of obligation. That figure incorporates several moving parts in the city's capital program across tax-supported general government buckets, water wastewater, TIF purposes, et cetera. So a lot of projects that are included in the appendix to this presentation that go into that number, but that's the request for consideration, is the notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation. As I mentioned, those will be a combination of tax-exempt and taxable bonds. The taxable bonds are issued for flexibility and for person use. You have done that as a city before on several different instances. As Adrian will mention in a little bit, we're also monitoring the economics of a potential tax-exempt current refunding of outstanding bonds, which if approved at a later date would generate savings for the city in terms of refinancing higher interest rate bonds for lower rate bonds. We plan to issue the bonds in June, close about a month after we price the bonds. Of course, you maintain very strong bond ratings of AA1, AA+ from rating agencies. That is the second highest rating possible and on par with actually US Treasury debt from two of the three rating agencies, which is a good fact for the City of Waco. In this instance, we are recommending, after much consultation with staff, that the city issues these bonds via a negotiated bond sale. We'll talk about that. But there is a tandem item for your consideration that approves a syndicate of underwriters that we have worked with staff to recommend serve as the syndicate for your bond underwriting later this year. So you can see the key dates. We're moving swiftly. We have already received proposals from underwriters. We're prepared to propose that syndicate today. This marks the notice of intention approval. We would come back in May with an approval of the actual bond sale via what's called a parameter sale, which allows the finance team, inclusive of the CFO or interim CFO, the financial advisors, to price the bonds on your behalf. At that point in time, we would also seek your approval for the refunding. We would price on or about June 4th. That date is flexible. We'll monitor the market and decide if that date is the way we want to go, or if we move it up or back. And then we would close anywhere from three and a half weeks to four weeks later on or about June 27th. That's the high-level summary. Turn it over to Adrian for some additional information on the market.
Thanks, Blake. If you can go to the next slide. So the next slide that we have is an interest rate, just historical perspective on where interest rates have been going back to 2000. If you draw a line from the point, the latest point in 24 there, January 24, you draw it across, rates have been, were lower than our current point between 2019 and 2022 during COVID. But if you look at it on a historical basis, we're still at historically low rates, even where we're at the market right now. Next slide. And this one shows you just a closer look at what rates have been doing on a yield curve comparison. The blue line being the current yield curve borrowing rate for AAA GO versus the dotted line, that rates are about a quarter to half a percentage point higher this year versus last year, but we're still historically at low rates when you look at it going back to 2000. The next slide, summary of projects to be funded for 2024 COs. This is the page that's driving the plan of finance. We've worked closely with Nick and his team to determine what projects you need for different enterprises and for general government on amortization, on structure, on the length of the debt. This page is what drives the rest of the presentation, the analysis, and the numbers. And again, the source data is the city, and we've refined this, I think, going back October. We've been working on this plan to get to this page. I'll stop. If there's any questions on this page, because this is really a key page of the presentation. If there's no questions, I'll keep moving. Next slide, summary of existing and new principal balance is outstanding. So this shows for general obligation debt and your enterprise debt, where you're at currently on principal outstanding, and how much we propose layering on with the 2024 COs. So the first row is existing, the next row is proposed, and then total is where you would be after the financing of the 2024 COs. And then the next page, summary of current refunding opportunity. You've got three bond issues that are outstanding, 2014 COs, 15 refunding, and a 15 CO issue, total up to 49.4 million of bonds. These can be taken out as a current refunding, meaning we could replace them with a new bond deal, immediately pay off those bonds. And we're tracking this closely for you, and we're including this as part of the plan of finance. The target is to, if a deal works within three to five percentages of net present value savings, our recommendation would be to do this along with the new money. It would make sense. The economy's of scale, you're already getting ratings and doing the bond process. Currently, it's at about 3.5% savings, saving about 1.6 million. We're tracking this on a weekly basis, and we're going to analyze this and determine it up to pricing date. And from that slide, I will hand it over to Blake.
So we get into some small numbers here. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but this is really just for your backup and review purposes. This is a schedule of the city's existing debt service across all purposes. And it breaks it out by water wastewater, mar, solid waste, TIF debt, drainage, and then tax-supported debt service, which is the piece paid by your IRS debt service tax rate. Next slide is broken out for this particular bond issue, so the combined tax-exempt and taxable bonds, how the debt service, i.e. the principal and interest payments, would look over several years. And you'll see that there's different repayment schedules, and that's intentional by design, reflecting sort of maturity dates for TIF debt, for example, long useful life assets for water, wastewater purposes, et cetera. And then this is, again, a pro forma perspective of after the new debt is layered on, the city's sort of total anticipated debt service payment by purpose and source. This is a graphical depiction of the same thing. The blue bars are on a going-forward basis, following this debt issue. What this is focused on is just the debt service tax rate supported debt service. So about 19 million and change this year, and that would increase next year to about 22 million, supported by the debt service tax rate of the city. And then again, this is a similar graph following this bond issue. The blue is the principal and interest paid back by the tax rate, and the gold is what we call self-supported, so all debt paid back by enterprise system revenue and TIF revenue of the city. We have spent a lot of time talking about how we sell the bonds. The city has traditionally sold the bonds on a competitive sale basis. That has been prudent and worked for you all very well. There are some different market dynamics in the current climate in terms of the availability of investment banks to do this sort of work. And given the size of this bond deal and the complexity, we are pivoting and recommending a negotiated bond sale. That would consist of a syndicate of underwriters that we have pre-selected and recommended for this city council to consider. The way that this will work is that we pre-select that syndicate of investment banks. They get involved early in the review of documents. What this allows us to do is control who underwrites your debt and negotiate the price with them on the day of pricing. It will result in what we believe to be very similar economics to a competitive bond sale, but gives a greater degree of control to the city and how we go about selecting the syndicate. We have been careful to comprise that syndicate of diverse firms, including major Wall Street banks, Texas regional banks, and MBE firms. So this is an overview of kind of the comparison of the two processes. But for this sale, we're recommending negotiated. We've gone over the high level of the timeline. Here are some more specific dates. With your approval, we will, the city will publish letters of intent to issue COs twice in two consecutive weeks, meeting the state law requirement. We will meet with the rating agencies in April and brag about how great the city is doing from a fiscal and economic perspective. And then we would issue bonds on or about May the 21st and close in June. This is an overview of your debt ratings. Again, we've covered this, your AA1, AA+. I do want to take a moment to comment on the credit strengths of the city, one being the strongly growing economy. And again, you know, we've all had the chance to say goodbye to Nick, but the team is deep and the bench is deep. Well-managed fiscal operations of the city, that reflects both day-to-day staff, but also the policies of city council that you have given and the stewardship you provide when you adopt budgets and are judicious with taxpayer dollars. Strong financial reserves, and then the one sort of consistent sort of credit, not even a concern, just a weakness that has you at AA+, is sort of the weaker socioeconomic indices that reflect, you know, some income gaps and the presence of a large university with college students that don't have much income. But we're working to communicate the great story of Waco, and we'll meet with Moody's and S&amp;P later this month. Those conclude our formal remarks. There's a bunch of information in the appendix about the projects that you have at your disposal, but we are happy to answer questions or reference slides we've gone through.
Any questions?
I've got a couple of comments, written a couple of questions. Thanks. First of all, I want to say, let me get Nick out of the way first. Nick, I appreciate what you've done for the Finance Department these last, I think it's three years, four years?
Three years.
Three. There was a lot of like structuring of reports that I was used to seeing, and you specialized a lot of those to make them easier for me to read. And I appreciate that, not just for me, but I think that's benefited the city. I'm looking at year-over-year and budgeting. It's a little more detailed, but I love it. And you tackled that. You didn't have to, but you did. So I appreciate what you've done for the city, and good, best of luck for you moving forward in Little Rock. Mixed emotions about you leaving, but happy for you to advance your career.
Thank you so much.
Blake, thanks for this report. I've got a little bit of background in securitizations and investment banking and structured transactions. So a couple of questions on execution. I think you hit the nail on the head on the bond rating, where we've got that AA+ rating, which I think carries us. And that's, again, I mean, I'll go back to you, Nick, the financial ops and the policies that we have in place and the processes that we have in place have really helped us keep that AA+, which helps bring down the cost of borrowing to the ranges you're talking about. I like the refi, I mean, I love this, because I used to do this too, where you'd refi higher coupon debt into the current market. I kept thinking that the rates had gone back up enough to prohibit us from that 10-year lockout, or the 10-year period where the lockouts expired. But I guess there's still a couple here that will allow us to refi out, which is great. You don't really have to comment. It's just a good thing. I guess that'll, depending on what happens between now and June, may help us determine whether we actually, do you have to give them notice on those refis? Or how does that work?
So what we'll do is, as part of the parameters approval in May, we will seek to authorize up to a certain amount of bonds to be refunded. That will set requirements that we must hit minimum net present value savings thresholds. It must be beneficial to the city. In other words, we can't extend repayment, for example. So what we'll do is, in May, we will approve that as part of the issuance of the COs. When we go to price bonds, we have ultimate flexibility leading up to and including the day of pricing to say, if the deal provides savings, then we'll include it. And if it doesn't, we'll put it back on the shelf. So it really is a tool that we'll use with the parameters approval in May to give us the flexibility to test the market. As Adrian pointed out, you're already issuing bonds with COs to begin with. The work is being done for new money purposes anyway, so there's really marginal time spent on this. It's a benefit to the city.
Do those refi bonds keep the same, or maintain that same remaining amort? Are they, the remaining like 10 years or 15 years?
In this case, they will. The common way we go about it is sort of structuring what we call the uniform annual savings. If there was a need to do some restructuring, for example, accelerate the payoff of those bonds, or in certain instances, we'll actually extend if there's a fiscal challenge for certain clients. That's not y'all. But by and large, we'll take pre-level annual savings with the refinancing.
Got it. Thanks. One more comment before I go back to the appendix. The June 4th, I mean, and I think I've asked this question every year, we don't do any hedging, or do we do hedging between the time we price and close on, just to cover the market volatility?
No, so that's a really good question. So once we actually price the bonds, the risk then falls to the underwriters. And so as we enter into that pricing day conversation, you know, whether it's 1 o'clock Central Time or 12:40, whenever that price is wrapped, we give what's called the verbal award. At that point in time, whatever happens in the marketplace, that's the risk borne by the underwriters.
So the exposure between June 3rd and June 27th is on the buyer?
That's right.
And he'll probably hedge it, I would think.
And that's a function of state law. So we have to allow the Attorney General of Texas roughly three weeks to review the bond transaction. So this is all very accepted in the marketplace. Buyers understand the time gap between the pricing and the closing of the bonds.
As I look through, and again, I invite the viewers at home, if you look at pages 30 and 31 and 32, 33, these are the projects that we're going, these are, just go, there's a park, there's a fire station, there's neighborhood improvements, there's sidewalks, there's just all manner of improvements that we're doing for the city and taking advantage of these, of the cash flow we have available to service this debt with the great rating that we have and the execution that we can get. So I'm excited about tackling these projects and getting them as part of the reality of what's, where we're going with the city and 200-plus million of new projects included here. So very excited about that. I think, and this is a big number, and I think if you look at page 24, that you'll see that was a nice slide for me as far as showing how we, what increment of debt service are we putting onto the city's existing debt service. And I hate just to reduce things to colors, but you know, the blue is what we currently have, throwing on that yellow and getting 200-plus million of projects, I think, kind of bears out the benefits of what we're doing here. So best of luck on the market, because at this point, it's on execution, right? So one more question. On competitive versus negotiated, on the negotiated, you still invite in a pool of people, or I mean, explain to me how we narrow the field to the negotiated. Do we just?
Sure. Yeah. So TGL led the charge on that. We issued an RFQ on behalf of the city to seek and solicit proposals from investment banks. You got 29 responses, I believe, dirty responses?
Got 30 responses.
Sorry, I mean to shortchange you on dirty responses.
Yeah.
You're very popular, Nick and Rusty have been very popular, as they got called on quite a bit. But we try to make it a fair process and ask proposals. We evaluate proposals based on experience qualifications and the considerations for sort of compensation that they would expect, and came up with a team. That team is, it's going to be Seabird Williams, Shank, Jeffrey, Samco, Stevens, and Cabrera Capital Markets. So as I mentioned, but a mix of Wall Street, regional, and MBE firms. And what will happen is they'll be involved as a syndicate with the bond document preparation. And then on the day of pricing, the FA firms work on your behalf to make sure their underwriting desk provide their proposed pricing level that is as consistent and transparent as possible with other AA primary and secondary market spread levels. And so once we're in the market, they solicit investor interest on behalf of the city at a of the city at a yield and a price for the investors, and then over a two-hour period or so, they tell us, here's where we have interest in bonds, and if all goes well, then we've achieved a good outcome for the city at the rates we enter the market with. In some instances, you'll have more investor orders than you have bonds for sale, and in that case, we actually just take advantage of supply and demand, and we'll adjust the price up in your favor and lower yields. In other instances, maybe the market was, the price level was too tight, and investors don't like that, and so we'll actually, we won't have as much in the way of orders, and we'll have to increase the price to, sorry, lower the price, increase the yield to attract more investors.
So even in the negotiated, you're reaching out to 30 different groups, right?
The investment banking firms will be doing that. They're reaching out to the new, the institutional investors, the PIMCOs, the Black Rocks, your local correspondent banks, you'll have, we'll see Texas banks participate, we'll see national investors participate, we'll probably have some sort of retail order period where if you want to, as a retail investor, mom-and-pop investor, buy Waco bonds, you may do so. So that's the way that that process will work.
So I will add, as far as the syndicate goes, Rusty and myself, and working with the FA team, we strategically chose the team that we picked to provide all those opportunities where you could have from retail community banks to your, you know, your insurance companies, your big investors, that they all have capabilities and they have niches where they work with those different groups. So that's kind of how we ended up with the five that we picked as our proposed underwriting team. But we also wanted to make sure we were addressing council strategic goals, and that was a big thing for us as well. Doing the underwriting negotiated sale allows us to do, to be, as Barfield tells me all the time, to be intentional in what we were doing as far as a city, basically putting our money where our mouth is as far as our goals and what we're trying to do. And so that allowed us that opportunity. So as Blake said, the city was, you know, 30 responses for a proposal. It was a lot of reading for Rusty and I. Fortunately, most of them kept them within our page limits. But it's just a testament to what you all have done as far as council and setting up the city in a way where 30 different firms from across the country want to work with the city of Waco and sell our debt. And so that's, that's really you, that's the work that you all do to put the city in a position where they want to do that.
Pretty impressive group, too, on pages 336 and 337. That's all I had. Yeah, best of luck in execution. Guys have a great track record, look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question if there wasn't anything else. Blake, in the conversation and about the commentary on credit rating, the, not issue, but the only negative, I guess, is the weak income indices and elevated outstanding debt. By nature of the makeup of the city, I'm like, how do we change that?
It's a really good comment. So the way that I like to talk to my clients about ratings is, there are things that you can control, and what they care about, and things that you can't control. You can't control the fact that you have infrastructure needs you have to address to issue, you have to do that. You can't control the social, to a certain degree, the socioeconomic makeup of the city. You put policies in place to ameliorate some of those things, that isn't one overnight thing that happens. And so, you know, we will continue to press upon the rating agencies to take a good view of the economy here, but those are just two things that really are difficult for you as a city council to mitigate.
These are long, that's a long-term goal, so as opposed to, look, we're going to change it from a red dot to like an asterisk.
I like that, I like that.
It balances itself out in some ways, so that you do economic development policies that you guys have done. When we do our writing presentations with them, those are, that's what we hone in on. We focus on those, we talk about, you know, graphic packaging and the pavilion, riverfront, all that stuff, those things that are moving that needle. So we kind of get hit because we have the institutional presence, but we also get credit for it at the same time. But there's not a lot you can do about the students. The students are really your primary reasoning for that and the driving down, but you also get credit for it at the same time. So it's kind of a weird way they structure the ratings.
Okay. I'll piggyback on that one. The things that you can control, you're doing a great job, the strong, the well-managed financial operations and strong financial reserves, and the growing economy attracting new businesses and economic development. So the parts that you can handle, you do very well, and part of our job with the rating agencies will be to highlight those.
Got it.
And the things that are out of your control, explain them and show how it's, in spite of that, you have a plan to keep growing and making the city better.
Thank you. And no need to restate Mayor Protim Holmes' statement, but thank you for your time and tenure here, and best of luck to you.
Thank you.
I'll just wrap up and say that, you, when you look in the project list in the appendix, it's really remarkable to see all of the incredible work that we're doing. I'm really excited to have this team, and I really want to thank our senior city staff for bringing you guys aboard. It's really, you know, I think, take us to the next level, and really thankful that we're deploying you guys to help us figure out how to go further faster and do good work that is consistent with our staff and council's vision for Waco, as well as our citizens' expectations for Waco. So thank you for being here with this presentation today. Just to wrap up, Nick, it's been just such an honor to get to know you. It is remarkable what, under your leadership, projects and budgets that have come through. And I'm really, really thankful that we have a staff that we can come with audacious big yoles, and y'all can help us figure out how to get it done. So thank you for your contributions to this city. I hope that at the end of the day, you go, as you continue your career in public service, at the end of the day, you'll look back on your time here and recognize that, yeah, it was fun to do some, you know, neat projects, but at the end of the day, the lives of individuals were made better, and that this community was made stronger because of your senior leadership and dedication. So wish you well as you go forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next work session is Work Session 132, a discussion of the City of Waco Integrated Water Resource Plan. I've been excited for this presentation for about six months, for the council to hear it. I think it's very important. Lisa Tyer, Director of Water Utilities, is here with the team from CDM Smith to discuss the plan, and this is a planning exercise that's, it can feel routine, I'll say, because you need to assess your water resources and supply reliability often, and provide, you know, a resource planning guide for a 100-year timeline. However, you know, in the context of where we are in a growing economy and also coming out of a historic drought, I think it's well timed that we're here today. During recent, the recent drought, the winter storm in 2021, we've really benefited, particularly on the water side, from the strategic decisions and legacy moments that past councils made decisions to plan for the future. We really are sitting on that foundation, and this is another moment, I think, that people might look back on similarly. Lisa, why don't you introduce the team from CDM Smith?
Okay.
And we'll get going.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. So I think Bradley kind of stalled my energy and our attention there, because I was going to talk about how great it has been in Waco to have mayors and council that not only ferociously protected our water quality of Lake Waco, but also participated or steamrolled us into raising Lake Waco seven feet. I want everyone to realize, if we hadn't raised that lake, we would have been in drought stage three, maybe drought stage four. So it was a, like, a brilliant move to have that done and completed. In addition, this own council went forward and purchased additional water rights in the Brazos River. That is just forward-thinking, but this is also on that, in that same line, we're not looking at water for the next five years, 10 years, 20 years. We're looking at, how do we plan to have water 100 years from now? Because that's going to take money, let's just be honest, it's going to take money, and we need to start planning for that now. So with that introduction, last April, we, at the budget meeting, we talked about the need for the Integrated Water Resource Plan. So we contracted with CDM Smith, and so we have, with us today in the middle is Alan Wilkie, who is often referred to as the best water engineer in the state of Texas, and we have Kim Chancellor and Jenny Bywater. So I'm going to turn it over to Alan and let Alan show y'all this plan.
Lisa, thank you for those kind words. Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity to present to you a year's worth of work, or almost a year's worth of work, on looking at evaluating, coming up with solutions to meet the long-term needs of the city of Waco, its water supply future. We're going to step through the presentation real quick. I know you have a lot on your agenda today, but as Lisa said, this is important, and we'll try to hit the high points, so you can take that away and consider it as you move forward with your deliberations. First thing we're going to talk about is the purpose of an IWRP. IWRP, Integrated Water Resources Plan, talk about how it's different from typical master plans and what it serves, what information it provides to the city of Waco. One of the things we're going to talk about is future supply gaps. We're going to talk about the water demands moving forward, out to 100 years, like Lisa said, and we'll look at your supplies going out 100 years, and where do those gaps occur? Where does, how big are the gaps, and how quickly do they occur in the city of Waco? Important stuff. We'll look at supply options that will be considered to meet those future demands. We'll talk about how we evaluated those and looked at them in terms of what would be the best fit for the city of Waco, and then finally, we'll wrap up with recommendations coming forth. The purpose of the IWRP, like Lisa said, is a 100-year plan looking out into the future. You may have heard terms Region G, State Water Plan, some of those things that are ongoing at this time. Those plans typically look out 50 years, which is a long way, a couple generations, but when you're doing water master plans and looking at long-term needs, you know, the longer you look out, the more time you have to prepare financially, politically, environmentally, all the things that you have to do with. So the objective was to help the city of Waco achieve a long-term water supply that was reliable and could meet your demands, not only under the historical hydrology, which we'll talk about in a minute, but also future and what we call uncertain hydrology. So we evaluate the volume and timing of additional supply needs, like we talked about, how much and when, and we're going to identify, evaluate available additional supply options, and finally, we want to maintain the consistency of the IWRP with the other master plans, both the water, wastewater master plans that are ongoing at the same time. So the water and wastewater master planning that is ongoing, the city has done several water and wastewater master plans over the years. Typically, they look at how big is your water treatment plant, how big are your pump stations, how big are your pipelines, elevated storage tanks, to meet your demands out over a 20-year period. Likewise, likewise on a wastewater master plan, how big are your wastewater plants, how big do they need to be, how big are your pipes and lift stations, but again, it's always over, typically a 20-year period, focused primarily on the demands, on immediate demands, the short-term demands, and the infrastructure needed to meet those demands. The IWRP integrates all that into one plan, not only looking at the water treatment plants and the water supply that makes water or provides the water to those water treatment plants, but also how wastewater and water can be considered as one water when we're looking out in the future. Reclaimed water probably is a term that you're more familiar with. It looks at projects from a multi variant standpoint, not only how much does it cost, but how easy is it to permit, how well does it meet your needs, and again, it looks out over 100-year timeframe. Let's talk about the future supply gaps. We start with the water demands. So what you're looking at here is fairly simple graph, one line, this is the easiest one, we're going to get more complicated after this. But this is showing that from 2020 to 2120, basically 100 years, what the demands for water are for the city of Waco. Just real quick, some of the information that went into that, it includes the residential and commercial demand projections based on population growth, historical water use, et cetera, et cetera. It looks at industrial use, you'll see that little bump that starts in 2024, 25, that are some of the new industries that are coming to the city of Waco that have announced that they have water demands that we are going to need to meet. So those are initial demand increases that we're expecting, and then the demand curve itself is including some additional industrial demand as we move forward, knowing that that's going to be something that's going to continue to occur.
So this takes into account neighboring cities that may be water customers of ours, or neighboring communities that may, in the next 100 years, come to rely on the city's water supply, our city's water supply. Is that fair to say?
It does to an extent. The city of Waco has several wholesale water agreements with, I don't know how many, over a dozen, I think, customers outside the city. We included them at their contract value.
Okay.
So if City X has a million gallon a day contract, we said they will use a million gallons a day, even though they may only be using a half a million gallons a day right now. My experience with TCEQ is that when they come in and evaluate the system, they will evaluate the system based on the contracted amounts that you have with other entities.
So it doesn't necessarily like, it wouldn't take into account, like, you know, we've heard the city of Georgetown is running out of water, or things that, it wouldn't, you know, like other new customers in the next 100 years, this kind of existing
Yes, sir.
Water supply customers.
Yes, sir.
And with that, in 100 years, we expect the demand to double based on this projection.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We also talked about maybe some of the cities that we have contracts with might use more than their contract amount, but in the end, to keep it simple and uniform across all the customers, we put them in a contract amount.
Thank you.
It also includes non-revenue water, that's the water that gets out of the system that we produce, but we don't get to bill for. It also includes pretreated and raw water users, like the Zoo and some of the other customers that don't use treated water, and then finally, production losses. While we take water from Lake Waco and treat it, there's backwash and sludges and things that we dispose of and we don't use. So all that is incorporated into these numbers. This is the raw water that you need to take care of, all those demands out there. And as you can see, it does increase from roughly 32 million gallons a day today to almost 70 million gallons a day in 100 years. So the doubling, as you suggested. First, we're going to talk about what the city of Waco has permitted in Lake Waco. So Waco has a permit for, I believe it's 79,000 acre feet or something like that, and you'll see, we tried to stay away from that term because it is relatively confusing, and tried to stay with million gallons a day, but they're both volumes that you can relate to. And so right now, the permit that the city of Waco has is almost a little over 70 million gallons a day. Now, that permit was established before there was what is referred to as the Water Availability Model, the WAM. That was something that came out of the water, the regional water planning process, and what we'll do in a minute is talk about where the WAM puts the available yield from Lake Waco, and how that compares with your water demands moving forward. So on the next slide, you're going to see, we're going to get more complicated, so you're going to see, the demand curve stays the same, the demand curve you may only see change one time, but the supply curves you're going to see multiple different ways. The green line is the, what we believe the yield of Lake Waco is under current hydrologic, sorry, historic hydrologic conditions. So the Water Availability Model uses the hydrologic period of 1940 through 2018. 1940 through 2018 includes the drought of the 50s, it includes the drought of 2011, it doesn't include the drought that we just had. The green line that's on top shows what the yield of Lake Waco is based on that historical hydrology. It's going downhill because the lake will continue to fill with sediment over time, and as it fills with sediment, the volume of water that we can rely on to get us through the drought is smaller. One of the things that we were asked to do, and not only by the city of Waco, but by other cities that we have done integrated water resources planning for, is what's going to happen if the future isn't a repeat of the past? So in the Water Availability Model, they take January 2018 and run it through December of, I'm sorry, January 1944, and run it through December of 2018 and say, that's going to happen again. Well, my guess, like in a lot of things, it's not going to happen exactly like that again. So what we called an available, or worst-case drought, is we took all that data and started shuffling the deck and said, okay, what if the rainstorm that happened in October here that filled up Lake Waco, wouldn't have happened for three or four more months, or maybe even until next summer, because we start shuffling the deck until next summer, because we start shuffling the deck to see when the rainy months are and when the dry months are, and say, if we had a prolonged dry period, maybe it's just bad luck, maybe it's climate changes, but if we have a longer dry period, what can we rely on? And so, that alternative hydrology, or the worst-case hydrology, is orange or brown line, it almost looks up there. And you can see that from that, now all of a sudden, where those lines are starting to cross the demand line, it's no longer saying, hey, we're okay for 100 years. Under the new hydrology, the WAM model, looking at sedimentation, we start to run out of water a little after 2100. Still probably not a problem for anybody in this room. But under the red line, where we have, okay, what happens if the hydrology is drier, hotter? We could be out by 2072, 2075. Still a long way off. Y'all are in a lot better shape than a lot of our clients when you're looking out that far. So, that's the good news. Even under the current conditions, even under alternative hydrology conditions, you're still in good shape. Now, we were asked to do one thing that was a little unique, and that was to look at what, how much water could we reliably take from Lake Waco to keep us from ever going into stage-three drought? We were close this year, I think with only a few weeks. If it hadn't have rained, starting in the middle of October, it rained really great in the end of October, probably in the summer, we would have been talking about going into stage-three. And there's some societal, political issues associated with that that we really would rather stay away from. So, we looked at that, and under those hydrologic conditions, if we wanted to stay above the 449 elevation, now all of a sudden, things look a lot different. Now, we're looking at 2040 as maybe we need to start looking at something to increase our supply so that we can stay out of that stage-three drought. That's really something that we're offering to the council and mayor to consider, because that's something that is a decision that the city gets to make. You're not going to see that in Region G, you're not going to see it in a lot of other things, but that is something for y'all to consider as to, where do we want to make that a criteria for us, kind of like some of the legacy things that we were talking about earlier. Is this a decision that's in the best interest of the citizens of the city of Waco? And we can talk about how we get there in a minute. So, when you look at the supply gaps, if we use where we are to stay out of stage-three, the gap that we have between that red dash line up there and the 2100 or 2120 demand is 33 million gallons a day, almost half again of what we have in our permits for Lake Waco. The orange line are the one with the alternative hydrology, we're looking at a 22 million gallon a day gap. So, one of the things that we're going to talk about while we, when we look at the alternatives or supplied projects that we could come up with to fill these gaps, is maybe we need to look at a 22 NGD project, for projects that are up to 22, maybe 33 NGD, but that we may need to start looking at those not in 2070, but perhaps we should look at them starting in 2040, so that we can stay out of the stage-three area. So, we'll look about, look at some of those projects and what we have to consider. Going forward, the planning assumptions are, we're going to assume the firm yield of Lake Waco under worst-case drought conditions. That's that alternative hydrology. In the near term, we're going to move up the water supply alternatives so that we can avoid stage-three drought conditions. This will ensure supply security, will have less impacts on the customers and less impacts on the recreational benefits of Lake Waco. But we'll time some of the later investments to keep us ahead of the demand curves associated with the alternative hydrology, and you'll see that graphically here in a little bit. Some of the supply options that we screened out, several of these are utilizing Lake Brazos and the Brazos River. So, one of the first ones, as Lisa mentioned, we acquired additional Brazos River water rights. We also have some of the oldest Brazos River water rights on the river, going back to 1919, I think.
1914.
1914, thank you. And so, there are 5 million gallons a day of water rights in the Brazos River that the city of Waco's owned for 110 years now. So, one of the ones is to utilize some of those water rights. We already have them, it's just a matter of getting them into the water system and treat it to drinking water standards. One of the things that we'll talk about is indirect potable reuse of Lake, in, via Lake Brazos, and we'll talk about what that is in a little bit. In a little bit of a twist, the indirect potable reuse of via Lake Brazos actually has us moving reclaimed water from the central plant to Lake Brazos. One of the things that was brought up, it's a really good idea, and we're working on seeing if we can actually make it work, we met with the BRA a couple of months ago to at least start the conversation, was a swap, so that we don't have to necessarily move the water from the central plant to Lake Brazos, but we basically work a deal with BRA that that water goes in, and for all the water that we put into the Brazos River, we can take water out of Lake Brazos. So, we're working on that, and it's just in its infancy right now, but that would save a lot of infrastructure to take it, take it use, to be able to implement that swap.
So, that's something where, like, we were contemplating essentially a straw to the Brazos, for lack of a better term, but some way to bring the Brazos water to our reservoir, but this would like, you're kind of treating the water, like, under an agreement with the Brazos River Authority? They have certain access to it, we have access to other water, like, how does that?
One of the things that we looked at when we were doing the study is the water rights permit for Lake Braz, or for the Brazos water right is, it says that you can take the water right out anywhere along the perimeter of Lake Brazos. So, we did a little study and determined that Lake Brazos, in fact, does go all the way to the dam at Lake Waco. And so, we could take the water from, we could take our water rights from the Brazos River, right in front of the DAF plant, and bring them into the DAF plant for treatment. The IPR, indirect potable reuse, is really looking at taking some of the effluent from the wastewater plant and bringing it back to Lake Brazos and saying, gallon for gallon, what we bring back, we can use as raw water for our drinking water supply. Under one of the IPR alternatives, that means actually taking it and pumping it into Lake Brazos. So, we would have a pump station, we would have a pipeline, we would have a discharge into Lake Brazos with a new effluent permit. The swap basically says, Mr. BRA, instead of us moving the water around and taking advantage of it that way, why don't we just make a deal, and we say, we put the water in downstream of Lake Brazos, but we get to take an equivalent amount out in Lake Brazos. So, it's a swap that saves us a pump station, a pipeline, and permitting effort.
Wow.
And in the initial conversation, Lisa was there, Jenny was there, I think it went pretty well, and they didn't slam the door in our face. They said, you got a little work to do, and we're working on the little, on that work, but they didn't slam the door in our face.
Is that something they do with other Brazos River users along the Brazos River Basin?
There was at least one example, I think, they brought up where it had been done. So, it's not, it's not impossible, and their system-wide permit gives them quite a bit of flexibility on how to deal with return flows. So, Lisa will keep you apprised of how that's all going.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Sorry for the sidetrack.
No, no problem. Moving, keeping in the Lake Brazos area, there's also the possibility of purchasing additional BRA water. Right now, there's none available. They are working on a reclassification of some of the storage in Lake Granberry, which could make some water available, and we have made it known to them that we are, Whitney, sorry. I get the two mixed up sometimes, Lake Whitney. And with that, Lisa's made it very clear to them that we're interested in acquiring some of that water if it becomes available. Conservation, Lisa's going to talk about the conservation plan in a little bit, but conservation, mostly what we assumed was passive conservation, you know, as toilets are replaced, as washing machines are replaced, as new houses come on with smaller yards, there's going to be less and less water use per person. We didn't do anything too drastic as far as major cuts. Our capital use in Waco is already fairly low compared to a lot of folks in central Texas. The other thing that we looked at on the supplies we evaluated was non-potable reuse. That would be some of the, using the purple pipe and taking reclaimed water from the wastewater plants and taking it to specific users, either industrial, taking care of the needs of some of the new industrial or existing industrial customers, and/or large irrigation users, like Cottonwood Golf Course or something like that. So, if those are using potable water, if we can move them off to a non-potable source, that makes that water available for future people in the city of Waco. Some of the things that we looked at, but we screened out for multiple reasons, one was raising Lake Waco conservation pool. Like Lisa said, we did that several years ago, looking at the report that was done at that time, there was a certain amount of capacity that could be moved from flood storage to conservation storage without an act of Congress, literally, an act of Congress. That, we took care, we took the full amount available at that time. To do additional conversion of flood storage, which is the Corps of Engineers' main purpose, into conservation storage, would take an act of Congress. It also would probably require raising the dam. The expenses are pretty astronomical when we start talking about doing that. We looked at it, we thought it probably better to put that on the side and look at some of the ones that are more simple to implement.
Did that seem like cost relative to the last time it was done? Was, that cost would be relatively higher than it was last time, given those construction?
Quite a bit higher.
Okay.
Yeah. Plus, everything's just a lot more expensive now, but in addition to that, going in and working on the dam and trying to raise the dam, and then all the recreational facilities and mitigation that would have to be done would be pretty astronomical. We did look at the possibility of diverting Brazos flood flows into Lake Waco. Sometimes the Brazos River is in flood stage and Lake, the Bosque River isn't, so the idea was maybe we can move some water over. That was evaluated. It didn't show much impact for the cost to implement it. Aquifer storage and recovery has been mentioned several times in the regional plans. The aquifer in the area of, in McLennan County is highly developed, so trying to find a place where we could put water underground and not have it basically siphoned off by other well users seemed like a pretty difficult task, so we put that one on the sideline as well. Other things that could be considered in the future, we have found a portfolio or a group of projects that meets all of our needs going out 100 years. The other ones that could be considered would be direct potable reuse. This is where the effluent from the plant goes through a very complex treatment process and goes right back to the drinking water treatment plant. It's beginning to get a lot of interest in the United States, there's a couple in the state of Texas. As water gets more and more difficult to find, you're probably going to start seeing this, or hearing that term a lot more. Sedimentation control, if you'll recall, the yield curves or the supply curves from Lake Waco all had a downward, all went downhill to the, in the future. If we could do something to reduce the amount of sedimentation, that curve or that line would go, either stay flat or wouldn't go downhill quite as fast. So, that would extend the supply of Lake Waco further into the future. Again, something that might be worth considering in the future. These are some of the reasons, we talked about it a little bit, but just to, I guess, put it on the record. During the previous allocation, the Corps had the discretionary authority to approve reallocation from flood storage to conservation storage of no greater than 15% or 50,000. They did that. We did that. The council, the city staff did that years ago. Additional challenges include raising the conservation pool would require raising the dam to maintain the flood control volume. That would be extremely difficult. Multiple required, studies would be required, and unknown dam improvements likely costing in excess of $500 million. And there's a minimum additional yield associated with that rise. The Lake Waco is like a bowl, kind of a flat bowl, as we make it higher and higher, the area gets bigger and bigger. Evaporation becomes our enemy, and even though we may be adding volume, we're not getting any more water from the Bosque River, and we're just making it a bigger evaporation pool. So, there's a point of diminishing returns there as well. Here's some of the supply options that we looked at to try to get to the full 22 million gallons a day, and then also kind of the range of those options. You can see the existing Brazos River water rights. We have the existing 5,600 acre foot that goes back to 1914, plus the river rights, I think it's 2,100 and change that we bought.
And that's 1921.
Yep. So, another really old one gives us about 7 million gallons a day of available supply on the Brazos River that we could start using as soon as we had a way to get the water out of the river. Conservation, you'll see a low end and a high end. Again, we don't believe that there's a lot of additional conservation that can be achieved in Waco because y'all are already doing such a great job. Non-potable, this is that site-specific or use-specific, either going to an industry or going to irrigation. On the low end, a couple million gallons a day. On the higher end, it could be up to 9 or 10 million gallons a day. It's really limited to some degree by how much we, our contract with Sandy Creek Power Plant. That's also the case for the next one, which is the indirect potable reuse. We believe that we can easily transfer 18 million gallons a day from the central wastewater plant to Lake Brazos to be commingled and used as a water supply, but again, because of our contract with Sandy Creek, we're somewhat limited to how much water is in the, is left over after we meet those obligations. And then finally, the additional water from Whitney, we think it could be 20,000 acre feet a year, or at least that's what Lisa's requested, so up to 18 million gallons a day of additional supply, if that water conversion happens. One of the things that we want to point out, and y'all probably all know this, but just to make sure it's, we don't leave anything unsaid, Lake Brazos is on the Brazos River. The Brazos River has traditionally been a little saltier, to use a very, a layman's term for it, than what we get out of Lake Bosque, out of Bosque River, I'm sorry, in Lake Waco. So, just wanted to go on record to say that the total dissolved solids that the constituents that make the water salty are about three times higher in Lake Brazos than they are in Lake Waco. We are still talking about being below the EPA standard of 500 and well below the Texas standard 1,000, and we're not talking about it being a 50/50 mix or anything like that. We're talking about it supplementing the 70 million gallons that we have in Lake Waco with 5 or 10 or 20 million gallons. So, there's going to be blending, and that number will be blended out, which I think we show here. So, the, we did some analysis on it, and I think we stayed well in the 400s when we blended, maybe even, maybe even in the 300s if we blended. But one of the things that we do need to bring to your attention is, there's a new constituent that EPA is going to be regulating in the near future. You may have heard it in conversations, it's PFAS or PFOS. It's, and I don't know if you're going to try to say it, but it's a, it's a compound that was made by our chemical companies and that we probably all are wearing on our clothes today. If you have a durable water-resistant finish, if you use Scotch Guard, it's used on hamburger wrappers and things like that to keep the paper from getting soft, but it's also showing up in our water supply, and it's been shown to have some unhealthy effects when exposed to humans. They're going down to some very low levels on this, and we did, or the city has done, and we, you know, have looked at the PFAS concentrations in the Brazos River, and they are higher than what will be implemented by EPA, I believe it's March of next year. So, in addition to the TDS issue, we also will have to treat that water to remove the PFAS so that we don't cause, create a violation in the city's drinking water. You can see some of the numbers on there. The EPA MCL, Maximum Contaminant Limit, is less than four, that's parts per trillion, so it's really, really low. Right now, in the Waco drinking water, it's non-detect, but you can see that even below the gates, the dam in the Bosque River, it's there in one constituent, and then the Brazos River has it also, at least one of the constituents that would have to be treated for. So, as we implement any of the projects that include diverting water from Lake Brazos, whether it be our existing water rights, future water rights or water contracts with BRA, or indirect potable swaps, we're going to have to add additional treatment to take advantage of that water. This is part of the, we use a water model called the Water Integration Tool. This is just a schematic from it. This generally shows what the city of Waco system looks like. Lake Waco, obviously, going to the DAF plant, from the DAF plant to Mount Carmel Riverside. The new treatment plant would be the plant that would be there to help remove the PFAS before it gets commingled with the drinking water. You also have the central wastewater treatment plant, Bullhide Wastewater Treatment Plant. From central, we have purple pipes that could be, that run all the way to I-35, that could be used to provide non-potable reuse to industrial or irrigation users. We could also use that water as an IPR, surface water augmentation, as we've talked about, whether that's directly connected or through a swap, and then obviously, and then you're already sending industrial reuse water down to Sandy Creek Power Plant for cooling. So, the supply evaluation, we looked at it, not So the supply evaluation, we looked at it, not just on cost, but we looked at it in several different ways. One was increasing system reliability. We wanna make sure that the options that we looked at were reliable and met the long-term needs of the city. We wanted cost-effective solutions, both capital cost and long-term operating costs. We wanted to protect the drinking water quality of the citizens of the City of Waco. Maximize implementation means that we don't wanna put something out there like raising Lake Waco that might take 50 years or 40 years to get done. We wanted to look at something that could be done, and you could see a work breakdown schedule of how to get there. And then finally, we wanted to look at sustainable supplies that could be used long into the future and, and were maybe not subject to curtailment or risk due to climate change or change in hydrology. So all those, and you can see the percentages on the bottom, all these were scored with metrics, and then were given weighted scores to come up with the, what we recommend as the best solution for the City of Waco. Little side bit, side talk about indirect potable reuse. We've been saying it a lot, or I've been saying it a lot, but some of the advantages are that IPR is a significant source of new supply, and it's an available supply that as the city continues to grow, it continues to grow. IPR increases the supply for the entire community because it's coming back into the drinking water supply, where you already have infrastructure to distribute it to your customers and the infrastructure to collect payment for that water. The potential for a water swap with BRA would make it more cost-effective. We've talked about that several times. And intake and treatment needed for IPR is similar to other supply options that take water out of Lake Brazos. So using the existing Brazos River rights, using any water we buy from BRA, using IPR would basically use that same infrastructure. Some different disadvantages, as we've talked about, are the PFAS and getting that water, getting that constituent out of the water, and then we're limited by the current contract with the Sandy Creek Power Plant. Non-potable, we've talked about this a little bit. Some of the advantages, we do have purple pipe in the ground that was put in years ago. We might be able to use federal funding to help us implement the project. There's a clear regulatory framework. TCEQ says, here's how you implement these projects, how, here's how you use it, so it's very clear. It better matches the water quality to the need, so if we were gonna use it for irrigation, we don't have to remove PFAS. If we're gonna use it for cooling, we don't necessarily have to remove the PFAS, so it matches up better. It saves operational cost for the drinking waters because we, that water, we don't have to treat for PFAS. The disadvantages of non-potable is it's only used for that one source, so not everybody in the community gets to get the advantages of it. If, if it offsets potable water, it does. If it just offsets other water supplies, it doesn't. Industry customers are less reliable, so if we invest in infrastructure to use this water, we need to be sure that we have a way to recapture our investment and that they don't change their mind and now we're, have a stranded investment. And it limits our additional water supply if we look at non-potable only, because there's only so many places that can use this water supply. So these two slides are basically just putting those two types of reclaimed water in context. So our recommendations. So what you see here, again, is, again, the same type of graph that we started with. You're seeing the demand and demand with conservation. Like I said, the, the conservation is not great because the city's already doing a great job, and it mostly is passive conservation as people change out their, their water appliances. But we think we need to build a new intake on, on Lake Brazos near the DAF facility so that we can take advantage of the city's existing water rights on the Brazos River, and there'll be an allocation to take advantage of IPR either through direct piping or through the swap, and that we then be able to start looking at how to integrate that water into the city's water supply. We need to continue to promote conservation. Lisa's gonna talk about the conservation plan update here in a little bit. We can look at indirect potable reuse of the central wastewater treatment plant supply via either IPR, direct IPR, or through the swap. And we need to continue to reevaluate our planning assumptions. This is something, just like the regional plan redoes the regional plan every five years, this is something that probably ought to be relooked at as things out there change, regulations, water supplies, things like that. If the, if the Whitney water becomes available, maybe that's something that we wanna move up, things like that. But what you're, what you're looking at here is, you see the, the supply from Lake Waco, the demand with and without conservation. Go back one. And then you can see the implementation of the existing Brazos River rights, some non-potable irrigation or industrial uses, and then finally, the indirect potable reuse occurring probably around 2080. That gets us out there assuming that Lake Waco is the yield under the alternative hydrology. If we go back and look at trying to stay out of, or putting our supply in place to stay out of stage three, you can see that the implementation, implementing the existing Brazos River rights, non-potable water supplies, starting in 2030, keeps us out of the stage three. Indirect potable reuse now moves up to about 2080, and then some additional future supply be either BRA water rights or something that we in this room don't even foresee at this point, will get it through the 100 years. The cost of the recommended options, the first thing is a new intake on the Bosque River near the DAF facility so that we can take advantage of the water in Lake Brazos. Additional treatment to remove the potential of PFAS, permitting a transfer diversion location in the Brazos River, the Brazos River right, I'm sorry. Non-potable supply to new industries, working with the new industries or existing golf courses to remove them from our potable water supply and get them on a reclaimed water supply, and then working with BRA for this swap that will allow us to use some of our effluent out of Lake Brazos without investing in the infrastructure. And you can see some of the, the costs associated with the intake, the phase one. GAC is granular activated carbon. It's one of the ways, one of the treatment processes that removes PFAS from the water. And we've got some permitting and then non-potable reuse to the industrial area. And then future investments beyond 10 years, additional non-potable reuse, phase two GAC treatment as we take in more Brazos River or Lake Brazos water, and then some additional upgrades to the central plant to provide additional reclaimed water if it's needed. And then this is an implementation schedule, and I've taken a lot of your time, and if you're interested, we can go through it, but I think I'll, in the, in the interest of it, skip over this and do a summary. So the past city council decisions, as the city manager said and as Lisa said, have made you all in a very enviable position as it relates to water supply. There are a lot of people up and down I-35 and throughout the state of Texas who wish they could look at a supply and demand graph and say, we're in pretty good shape. We have a couple generations to work this out in, in, under the best cases. But we need to continue to look forward and continue to put the, the water supply future of this community in direct view of how we're gonna get there. So we, we think that we ought to look at, you know, this is, avoiding stage three drought constrictions, restrictions requires additional investments between now and, between 2030 and 2040, excuse me. So we need to continue to promote conservation, which will happen passively. We need to have the infrastructure to withdraw water from Lake Brazos. First, our, our water rights and then potentially either IPR or future water supplies from BRA. And we need to try to get the, implement or integrate the non-potable use to these new industries that are coming to the city, especially if they're near I-35 and Hillcrest area, and then potentially the golf course to remove them from our potable water supply. And then other supply options in the future that we need to keep in focus are indirect potable reuse through the swap hopefully, and then purchase of BRA water supplies if they, if they become available from Whitney. And I think that's all we have. So it's just, at this point, we've taken a lot of your time, tried to make this as clear as possible. It's a very complex subject, but it's one that the city council or previous city councils have done a great job at implementing and keeping the future water supply of Lake Waco, of the City of Waco, way out in the future.
Do we, why don't we go ahead and roll to our discussion on the Water Conservation and Drought Contingency Plan. We're running about 30 minutes behind schedule, and I know this is something we all wanna comment on and definitely is important, but for sake of time, let's move to the next one. And we'll, we'll talk about that, and then we can, if y'all, if y'all don't mind, why don't you all stay at the desk?
Okay.
And then we can ask questions related to both at the end of the two presentations.
Well, the 2022-23 drought was the first time in my years with the city that we've implemented drought stages, and the drought was like a master alarm going off for me.
Hey, we've got a problem here.
So what's the plan?
What's your plan?
What are your plans?
What's the plan?
What's your plan?
What's your plan of action?
Plan?
What's the plan?
So, what is the plan?
Wait, I have a plan!
I have a plan!
I have a plan!
That's the plan.
I have a plan here.
I love everything about your plan.
What's it say?
What it says? I love it when a plan comes together.
A high bar for all presenters.
That's great.
Well, when you stumble on something that just seems to fit, sometimes you gotta use it.
Yeah, that's right.
And I know Mr. King really likes to throw in cartoons and things, so I wanted to throw something in there for you. So I know that Water Conservation Plan, the purpose of it is really to find an efficient way to use your water. And the Conservation Plan that we developed has strategies to reduce consumption, water loss, water waste, and to increase efficient use and recycling and reuse of water. So the City of Waco's water loss is very low. We are at 3.1%, and that's for 2023. Our outdoor water use landscape irrigation is the one area that can provide the City of Waco with meaningful conservation. It also helps to defer costs by the city for, because we won't need to, to increase water lines, pumps, and at some point, plants to provide water for outdoor use. The difference between winter and summertime peak is about from 22 million gallons a day in the wintertime to 45 million gallons a day in the summertime. That is all outdoor water use. So we have some proposed changes to the Conservation Plan, and those proposed changes are year-round, two-day-a-week outdoor water use, no outdoor water use between 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. You would be able to water with a handheld hose with an automatic shut-off, you know, one of those that you squeeze, you let go, it stops, would be allowed daily, any time of the day. Drip irrigation buried six inches deep would be allowed all the time. And water use would be discouraged on impervious surfaces, except for health and safety purposes. So that means we, you know, want people to start changing their habits where they're not using water to wash down their sidewalks and their driveways. Instead, they would sweep those, and runoff more than 10 feet would be considered water waste, and then criminal penalties would apply in the conservation, year-round Conservation Plan. Now, that does not mean that, that the first time we see somebody not adhering to a plan, we're gonna find them. We would want to spend a, you know, a few months educating people and then send them a notice that says, hey, you're, you're outside of your watering days or your watering time. Maybe send them a second notice that says, hey, we noticed that, you know, you're not watering when you're supposed to, before we would ever institute that you're going to get a citation because you're watering outside that, those days. One other thing is, this is a list of cities that currently have a, a water, year-round water Conservation Plan. This is not an all-inclusive list, and I will tell you that every one of these has little nuances that maybe are a little bit different than what we're planning. Some of them have different time restrictive, so they're 10 to 6 or they're 10 to 8 rather than 10 to 7, which is what we chose. But these, this two-day-a-week watering has been out there for a minimum of five years. Some of these cities have had it longer than that. And so there are variations, but this is not a new, new concept. So one of the things that we would need to do if we adopt the two-day-a-week watering would be to have variances for the conservation period. And we'd want to have a 60-day water, 60 days, 60-day variance for new plants that have been planted, and that, you know, basically those variances would begin the day that your plants went in. We'd have basically what we did during the drought stages. We would have a form online that people could fill out saying, I have, I'm, I'm planting new plants, I need a 60-day variance. And it, it worked last time. And one of the other things that we're proposing is to have athletic fields and golf courses submit a water plan. We don't want it to be overly complex, but our goal is to have them tell us how much water they need, and then to show us how they are going to reduce their water usage during a drought, to meet our percentage goals that are in each drought stage. One of the other things that was a very popular issue during the drought was water slides in pools for parties, and we would allow those for two consecutive days. Some people own that water slide, though, and it has a little pool on the bottom of it, and they are allowed to fill that with a handheld hose with an automatic shut-off valve all day long, if that's what they wanna do. But if they want to leave that hose laying in that pool, then they need to do it during the water days they're allotted and the time. We want that water hose to be manned so that we get the best conservation out of that. And then charity car washes would be allowed for up to two consecutive days. So the drought contingency plan, it's really the same four stages. It's based on decreases in the Lake, Lake Waco reservoir level, water system failures or emergencies, and inability to recover storage, you know, in our water towers and tanks, and then a lot of other issues. This is just a chart that shows all the triggers that we have in our drought stages. Drought stage one, it's one through four, you can see the lake level reservoirs, and I'm just briefly gonna go over what that means. So right now, a normal lake level is 462 feet above mean sea level. Stage one takes effect at 455 feet above mean sea level. That means that all seven feet that we raised the lake to is gone, and so we have 72% of our reservoir remaining. Stage two is 452 feet, and the reservoir is now has 60% remaining. Stage three is 449 feet above mean sea level, and the reservoir is at 50%, and stage four is at 445 feet, and the reservoir is now at 40%. The other triggers are the weather forecast, other unforeseen events, that could be something as simple as maybe the chemicals, where there's too many chemicals put in the water, so we don't want people to use that water till we dump it and replace it. So other unforeseen events, things that we don't know yet. Water storage recovery, reduced supply, so in stage three, if we, if Lake Waco only has a 24-month water supply remaining, that would be a reason to be in stage three. Stage four, that would be a 12-month supply, and then a catastrophic decrease in Lake Waco, which to me means maybe something happened at the dam, so we have no water or limited water. So stage one responses would be the city will prepare a water plan to reduce the use of water for municipal purposes. The city shall monitor for excessive water. Year-round outdoor water conservation measures would still be in effect. Variances would reduce from that 60 days to 45 days. The golf courses and athletic field watering, they either have to adhere to the two-day-a-week water schedule or have to have submitted that plan, and then criminal penalties would reply, would apply in all drought stages. Our reduction goal is 1% of the previous three years for average daily usage. What that means is that in the summer months, that would be about a 13 million gallon a month reduction, so not terribly significant, but it would be, it would be something. Stage two responses, again, the city will prepare a, a water plan to reduce municipal outdoor water use. That would include reductions in hours for such things as spray parks. Outdoor water use would remain the two-day-a-week from 10 to 7. The variances would be reduced to 30 days. The golf courses and athletic field watering would still have to adhere to their submitted plan or be on that two-day-a-week schedule, and water conservation rates would take effect. So water conservation rates, residential customers would have no impact in stage one at all, but in stage two, for those people using more than 15,000 gallons of water, between 15,000 gallons and 25,000 gallons would show, would have a 10% increase in the volumetric rate for just that year. Then at 25- Then at 25,000 gallons, they would have a 20% increase in their volumetric rate for just that, that tier. And so just for an example, a residential customer using 20,000 gallons of water would see about a $4.09 increase. For irrigation systems, so this would apply to all commercial accounts, industrial, residential, anybody who has an irrigation meter. A customer using 20,000 gallons would see a $14.20 increase. So our goal in stage two, November through March, because our residents do do a good job through the wintertime months, we only are hoping to get a 2% reduction. That saves us about 13 million gallons a month with that 2% reduction. During the summer months, when people use a lot more water, we would look for an 8% reduction. And that would save us 108 million gallons of water a month. So stage three is really the meat of everything. It is, there's a lot more restrictions here, there's a lot more, I think hardship when we get to stage three. This is a severe water shortage at this point. We are looking at having, when we're talking stage three, we are looking at having 24 months of water supply remaining in Lake Waco. So the city, again, will prepare a water plan, will be at one-day-a-week outside water usage, but with the same time period for when no water would be allowed. Watering by a handheld hose would then only be permitted on that day that you're assigned and the times that you're assigned, that you're allowed to use water. Very drip irrigation would still be permitted. There would be no variances for new plants. Existing pools, hot tubs, fat ponds, fountains may be replenished by handheld hose only to maintain operational purposes. Permitting of new swimming pools, hot tubs, spas, ornamental ponds would be, would be prohibited. But those who've been permitted and are under construction may complete construction. Excessive water runoff is prohibited. Washing or hosing down of buildings, sidewalks, driveways, patios, any, any impervious surfaces, surface is prohibited. Car washes would not be allowed to operate. Commercial plant nurseries are still permitted to operate but are not allowed to wash down impervious surfaces. The golf courses and athletic fields must adhere to their submitted water plan or adhere to the once-a-week water schedule. Use of water from fire hydrants would be prohibited, except for firefighting, health and safety-related purposes as determined by the city. And conservation rates, again, for stage three would be implemented. At stage three, you can see now that for residential customers, there is a 10% increase in that volume metric charge, starting at that 8,000 gallons. And then at 15,000 gallons, there would be a 20% increase. And then for anything over 25,000 gallons, there would be a 40% increase. Again, that same customer using 20,000 gallons, this would be a $13.18 increase for them. Remember, in Waco, the average customer uses 7,800 gallons, though. For irrigation systems, again, if you have an irrigation meter, you would see an automatic 20% volumetric increase, increase in your volumetric rate. For anything over 25,000 gallons, you would see a 40% increase. For a customer using 20,000 gallons, they would see a $28.40 increase. But remember, we are in a severe drought at this point. Again, we're looking for that 2% through the wintertime reduction goal, so still only a $13 million a month savings in water. But from April to October, we are looking for 15% reduction. And the water savings for that would be about 202 million gallons per month. Stage four responses, this one is the simplest one because any and all outdoor water use is prohibited. We are in an emergency at this point. We are saying we have 12 months' worth of water available to, to treat, to make into drinking water. So any outdoor water use is prohibited. The use of water for municipal purposes will only be for public health, safety, and welfare. The use of water from fire hydrants is only for firefighting, health, and safety-related purposes. And conservation rates for stage four are implemented. So it didn't go up another tier, but it did increase in the volumetric charge. So if you're a residential customer and you were using between 18, 8,000 and 15,000 gallons, you would see a 20% increase in your volumetric rate. If you're 15,000 to 25,000, it's 25%. And anything over 25,000 gallons, it would be a 50% increase. So a customer using 20,000 gallons would have an increase of $19 in this stage. And remember, all's we're trying to do is get you to stop using water that you don't need for your household at this point. So there should not be anybody using their irrigation meter at this point, but let's say we have somebody because they're not permitted to use water outside. So there shouldn't be an irrigation meter that is on in the city. But should somebody have theirs on, 20,000 gallons, they would see an increase of $35.50 on their bill. And we would probably at that point let code enforcement know because a citation does need to be issued at this point. So our reduction goals, November to March, we're in an emergency state. We want a bigger increase even in our household uses. So we're asking for a 5% reduction. And that would save the city, the water, 33 million gallons a month for that November to March time period. So each month, we'd save 33 million gallons. And then April to October, that would be at a 20% reduction goal, that would be a $270 million a month savings in water. Enforcement, misdemeanor punishable by a fine, flagrant violators could have their water services terminated. That wouldn't be like the first time we find somebody. That's gonna be somebody we just cannot get them to stop using the water when they're supposed to not be watering outside. The city may utilize the advanced metering management system to determine the day and time of day usage to issue a citation. And just the key points on this, a conservation and drought contingency plans are required by the state. The 2022, 23 drought brought to life the need for year-round conservation. The plans are a more thoughtful response to conserving water and extending the life of our infrastructure. And to that point, we, we do have areas of town that in the summertime, we struggle sometimes, having everybody's sprinkler system come on at the exact same time of, of the morning. And not, we'll get complaints from people whose sprinkler system will not pop, you know, come up because everybody has their sprinklers going at the exact same time. That two-day-a-week allows us to control that, and we stopped having that problem during the drought. So that was, it does help us with infrastructure, defer some of that, that cost. And many cities have a two-day-a-week year-round outdoor watering schedules, and a few have a one-day-a-week year-round outdoor watering schedule. And that's it.
Mayor, Mayor Council, this is ACM Kane in the back. Just real quick, I wanted to say, appreciate Lisa's work on this. If you'll recall, last year, when we were nearing the end of, we were in the middle of the drought, and we had to take some steps, Bradley did as city manager, to take some steps to increase water conservation earlier than the plan that was in place at that time called for. And that was based on rain forecast in the North Bosque Basin and some other factors. And so we, we had to take steps that our current plan allowed for that flexibility, but it didn't have the detail that we needed to have in the plan. And so one of the directives from the city manager's office to the utilities group was to look at our plan and look at other plans around the state and find the best plans and look for ways to conserve as much water as we could and to preserve the water availability in the lake. And I want to commend Lisa and her team for, for doing just that. She spent a lot of time looking at water plans all around, not only Texas, but in other states, and looking for ways to make our plan more meaningful and thoughtful. And last, I'd say that Councilmember Bearfield and I had the chance to, to go to a two-day conference at the Texas Lyceum where they brought some of the best minds of this, in the state together to talk about Texas's water concerns and into the future, what needs to be done. And I think what you see before you today is, is our best effort to show good conservation planning and drought contingency planning. We were rescued essentially this last year by water in the right place at the right time. It rained exactly where it needed to rain. And while it, it flooded some of our neighbors to the north, and we certainly regret that, as far as the lake was concerned, it was exactly where the water needed to be. If that water had been 30 miles east or west, it wouldn't have come into Lake Waco, and we would be in a difficult situation. So I just wanted to commend Lisa and her team for doing what we asked and looking at the best practices in, in cities around the country, and certainly in Texas, and bringing that plan forward today. So thank you, Council, for consideration, and Lisa and her team are available to take any questions.
I'm gonna jump in, unusually just to start and frame out a couple of things. But first, this is phenomenal. Both of these presentations were really, really well-delivered. And I think that one of the greatest legacies that this council and this staff will have is being able to look back and say that we honor the legacy of those that came before us, and we're really strategic and thoughtful about Waco's water supply. I think it's not lost on anyone, that water will be gold in Texas, and that Waco has the opportunity to implement some strategies that is going to ensure its ability to grow and ensure its ability to thrive. And both of these presentations have a lot of incredible recommendations that ensure that we're gonna get there. I do think that, and I, I don't want to chill discussion, I think we definitely have time for questions and conversations, but I'm gonna, I know that we are considering voting on some of the drought restrict, the, the water conservation and drought contingency plan restrictions tonight. I think there's a lot of information to digest tonight, and I think it might be good for council to be able to really process this as it was delivered to us tonight. It's incredible information and good work to the staff that prepared it, but I think it's gonna be important for us to really think about all of the information that was presented to us as we move forward. But would recommend that we might consider tabling that. And with that, I will turn it over to other council members for any questions or further comments.
Really appreciate the work of our water department, Lisa, and our consultants here who have done such a great job of, of giving us a century look into the future in terms of water. It's, it's somewhat encouraging to know that we're in a, a good position relative to peer cities in the state of Texas where water is becoming, as our mayor said, increasingly more important as a resource. It's no secret that human communities develop near fresh water sources, and that has been our history here from the Waco people onto the present. And that's number one for any council, is to ensure a reliable freshwater source supply for our residents. And we continue, past councils and past staff have understood that and have made some major strides in this issue, as y'all outlined in your presentation. And I'm very grateful that we've got Paul, Lisa, and so many others thinking about this just in the same way, which is strategically with the long-term focus. But I agree with our mayor that in terms of specific conservation measures, we probably need a little time to take this all in and study it. But grateful for the large perspective, and also some of these recommendations are definitely needed and looking forward to implementing them as we go forward. So thank you all for educating us and for helping us safeguard our future here.
I appreciate your presentation, and I did have a few questions. I thought that, like, our, our, I know, our golf courses and those types of industry already were using non-potable water. Is that wrong?
So most of the golf courses around Waco are on raw water. So they're taking water directly from the lake. But when we're in a serious drought time, we really need for even for them to have a plan, not just, we're gonna take as much water out of Lake Waco as what we want, and hopefully that there's water left there for, to be treated, you know? We need for them to, to look at, if, if we hit drought stage and we need for them to reduce 15%, they need to show us how they're going to be able to reduce.
And they do not have a plan at this time?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then my next question, you mentioned football fields or fields?
Athletic fields.
Athletic fields. What are they using now?
Potable water.
Really? So can that be changed without, without, or is that, is that possible, feasible to change without great burden?
Everything's possible. A lot of, a lot of cities put purple pipe in.
Semi-colon with great.
Yeah, yeah. With purple pipe in, but that has not, other than the one line that we have that goes from central plant really to right in front of tractor-trailer supply, we don't have another line that's a purple pipeline. So the idea would be if we can ever finish that line and get all the pumping and storage that we need to make that line a reality, the line's there. We just, and then to extend it into the industrial area, it could also be extended into Cottonwood Golf Course and potentially then into maybe WICs.
Okay, okay.
So it's difficult to run that all over town unless you're putting in new pipe and you're going to also lay a purple pipe at that same time.
Got it, got it, got it, got it. Okay. I, I thank you for that and, and that information. The other only question I had, I think, for the engineers was, you, you mentioned that BRA didn't laugh you out the room. Was there, do you have a timeline in your head about what that swap would look like?
So we're working on the studies right now to give them the data to show that the water would be available. I, I really can't give you a timeframe of how long it would take BRA to evaluate it and get back to us. It's probably at least a year or two.
No, 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 I don't, I don't mean what, what they will do. I mean, what, if, if, if you wave in a magic wand, what does that look like?
So how long would it take to do that?
If you're wait, if you're waving the wand?
I, I would say we would need it in a couple of years.
Okay.
So one of the things with that is BRA is looking for us to be able to, to provide them a reliable release of our effluent. And because we have so much of it already going to Sandy Creek, that, that's, that's really our problem, is trying to figure out how much can we really have. And maybe that requires for us to go back and talk to Sandy Creek at some point.
Okay, thank you.
Is that what you had, Andrea?
Yes, sir.
You took my question. I was gonna ask about the athletic fields as well, so save a little time, I won't.
I just have a couple of comments. CDM Allen, great presentation. You presented a very complex issue, and the progressive slides, I thought were excellent way to, to demonstrate. And I, gives me kinda, these two.
I missed the message.
Jenny and Kim, right? Thank you guys then. Because it kinda gives me hope. See, you divided kind of the light blue, the dark blue, the purple, the purple. And if we kind of plan some of this correctly, we could be in pretty good shape long-term. I think that, that makes me feel a lot better about it. But a great presentation. And then, I guess, everybody likes to talk about, well, let's just raise the lake level. All you need to do is just let more water in there. But you present the challenge of redoing that dam at a cost of half a billion dollars. And, and then the other thing I didn't think that much about, I was generally aware of it, but it flattens out so much that you lose a lot of effective, uh, storage from the evaporation. So maybe that doesn't work like it did back in 1960 and 30 years ago when we did it last time.
Even before my time, Jim.
Before your time.
Yeah.
All right. But then I also liked how you, we really kind of divided it into conservation. This Brazos writes, as, as Councilmember Bearfield talked about that swap, I think is super intriguing. You can just kind of keep things the way they are, let, let go downstream what we're letting go downstream and pick up some upstream credits. I mean, without, because I kept thinking we're gonna have to do some kind of pump system physically, but if we can avoid that with a simple swap, I mean, I think that's brilliant. brilliant. And then as council member Bearfield also said, is it potable or potable? I want to be saying it right. What is the?
I have, I have heard it both ways and I think we all understand when we hear that, we can just take it.
Potable, sounds more, sounds more European or something. All right. So the potable, I think that as we try to utilize the potable, the non-potable more where you don't really need it is, is council, as council member Bearfield pointed out. But that is kind of three, to me, major topics here, conservation, Brazos, and the potable, potable water. And then Lisa, yours more concentrates on that conservation issue that we can kind of control through policy. And I do agree with mayor that we, give us some time to digest what these changes would be. But I did have a couple of questions on it, and again, this is, I hate to say the cheapest one, because we're, the conservation is just like, like I said, policy and trying to control the, the, the supply. Just a couple of questions I had on your presentation, and I'll follow up with you afterwards. Just that pier city, I like that. But maybe get a little more detail on that, because you said some are once a week. I just wanted to show that, you know, we're not taking the extreme position of once, you know, that our, that our solution kind of falls in the middle. And maybe that's not appropriate either if we're losing conservation effective or efficiency there, but maybe a little more detail on that. On that surge pricing, you show it in the terms of a percentage. Is it possible to show that in terms of like dollar amount also? If somebody's paying $100 and that person is using 20,000 gallons, does that all of a sudden become $250 or just isn't, you know?
So would you like to see a chart where we can show you what the, the increase in the rate is?
Yeah.
Like here's what the rate is and this is.
Because I think we're going to get some very, you know, direct, well, if I'm using this, how much is it, if I'm already using 20,000 and I'm used to paying whatever that is, now you're telling me it's going to be $500 a month. I don't know what that scale is precisely. Some help there. Residential versus commercial, did we talk about commercial, did we? What do the rates do there?
So for commercial, because we're commercial industry, we're figuring that they're using that to, to generate business and usually they don't have really large, industry of course uses a lot of water, but they're using it to make a product, right?
Yeah.
Commercial, they typically are either restaurants or you're, you know, a bathroom and a sink in a, in a store somewhere. They're not.
Not big users.
Not big users. But irrigation is where we really do impact them because almost every water irrigation meter in the city is, almost all of them are commercial, are industrial.
Great. And then my last observation I had as we contemplate this over the next weeks, when we, the slide you had on page 83, that was like the drought stage triggers, I like the additional information you gave where it was 462 feet is full, 455, 452, 449, another percentage, et cetera. Do we, what is, we can, the lake can be above full, right? Or I mean, are we required to let it out to get down to 462?
So that's a, that's an Army Corps of Engineer lake, so, and it is a flood control lake, so they tend to let it out to 462 so that if there is rain that comes again, they, they can store it again in the lake, especially if the Brazos River is flooding, because they like to store it in the lake to keep downstream from flooding additionally. And we saw that a lot in 2015, 2016, when we had just massive amounts of water that they were releasing from, from the lake, but then they hold it for a long period of time too, because the Brazos was flooding so high.
Got it. That's really all I had, we'll be following up with you. But yeah, great, C D M, I love the way you presented that. Again, very complex and you made it very, pretty simple. And Lisa, great presentation on, on kind of what to do on the conservation and some suggestions and giving us something to think about for sure.
I can't probably say very much that hasn't already been said in terms of thanking you guys for these really thorough presentations. I, I think generally, I'm in agreement with my colleagues up here that this is a lot to digest, specifically, you know, when we're looking at implementation of restrictions and cost structuring. But I also think generally I'm in favor of doing what we can to conserve water when we need to. And, you know, I, I was late to a lot of things before I married my wonderful wife and she would always text me to be there maybe 20 minutes before I needed to be because she knew that I'd get there on time at that point. And that's funny, huh, Mayor?
I'm going to start having to do that too, I think.
I had to say, you know, we don't really have a way to capture a lot of people's usage or enforce our compliance when we do have restrictions in place outside of someone's neighbor calling or something like that. So in terms of having tiered pricing when we're in restrictions, I see that as a, you know, a good step towards finding an equitable way to capture some of that back. Otherwise, we don't really have a way to do so. And I see all of these restrictions sort of as that, that text to get there 20 minutes early, knowing that they're actually going to get there on time at that point to sort of change habits rather than the expectation being that everyone's going to do this and fall online right away and hope that we can land somewhere in the middle on that. So I appreciate your thoughtfulness in putting this together and I look forward to discussing it more as we look to bring it to whatever the final form is. So thanks, guys.
Thank you, team. Appreciate you guys. Lisa, great job. Thanks.
All right, mayor and council, we're going to pivot on the agenda slightly. I'm going to invite Jonathan Cook up next. He's got work session 135. It's a discussion and update on our regional park project next to Floyd Casey. Jonathan's joined by a team member from Design Workshop, our design consultant. They're going to present the update on our design plans for the park. And you'll see there's a lot in store for the community with this more than $20 million project, which is our largest investment in parks ever. I like to keep saying that. It includes an all abilities playground, a hub for our hike and bike system, as well as a new element that we're presenting tonight for the first time, an opportunity to honor Hispanic heritage within that park and connecting back towards South Waco Community Center. This is kind of a continuation of Waco telling its story thoughtfully and intentionally. It started with our efforts at East and South Waco Libraries and it's continuing forward at the Pavilion Parking Garage, as well as the Sandtown Tribute on the Riverwalk. So I'm excited for you to hear about that and for council member Rodriguez to speak into the work she's doing in the community to get additional feedback. It's very important work. So I'll turn it over to Jonathan and I think we've got about 20 minutes.
Jonathan, before we start and before we get on our time loss, I just want to say we have a task force, not a committee, Jennifer, but a task force that has been helping me along the way. And some of them are here, two of them are here, and I want to just take a minute to recognize them and their work that they have done and have helped me and we're continuing to do the work. Isabel Osano and Elaine Wazell, if y'all please stand up, just be recognized for your work and time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, council member, and thank you Bradley for the introduction. And I, I do want to start off by saying I am joined here by Minister Connors Ladner, really one of the more distinguished landscape architects in our state, just done a tremendous amount of work in his career, transforming public landscapes. And one of the reasons that we called on him and the team from Design Workshop, who have been great to work with so far, and we're going to give you a peek at the exciting opportunities that we have. A quick overview, and I'm going to be brief, y'all hear enough from me, but I think the picture tells the story right here, is not often when you have a project of over 30 acres in the core of the city that you're able to create a park. And so this is a gift to our city that is alongside a thriving neighborhood, that is very, parks are very popular, always busy in this area, but then also next to the new development of Floyd Casey, along a creekway as well. So we've got some project goals and recap we're going to hit on, and then we're going to see some of the vision that Connors and our community have come together to create. First and foremost, you know, with this regional park, we knew one of the main goals was to create a park that can be used all abilities and that's exciting in itself to finally get to the point where Waco is going to have an all-ability inclusive playground that we are proud on. And so that's number one, is creating, look, one, of the inclusive nature of this park, then it's capitalizing on the connectivity to creek and nature. This park was a critical component of our master trail plan that we completed last year. As you know, we also have an existing track and field facility, but perhaps what's really come on the radar and really, where I mentioned that word, opportunity, is the cultural component that we've come across in working on this park. And it's our, you know, chance to look back and see the Hispanic heritage that lies within the Hispanic community, how do we recognize our local leaders and make this park an interpretive educational opportunity for our children? Bit of the process that I'm just going to point out, anyway, when you have a park like this, it's a large investment and a lot of things go into the planning, especially next to the development. I'll just point out that we are here as we're capturing the vision and presenting that vision today. We're going to go through a couple of month process to finalize that, get the cost analysis dialed in, and we'll go straight into schematic design and construction documentation. So we have been doing a string of public meetings, open houses, field surveys, really coming together with our stakeholders as we've gotten to this process of getting the conceptual vision established. Timeline, I mentioned where we go from here, couple of months for the completion and then we'll be going straight into that construction document, schematic design. I'll note we're on a tract and bid, the project out late '24 with that groundbreaking early '25. So under that year process, we've got this concept dialed in and we're aligning that with the $22 million allotment for design and construction. With that, I want to turn it over to Mr. Ladners and he's going to walk us through some of the details of the project.
Great, thanks so much. So want to just start by thanking the Parks Department for all the support through the process, as well as the City Manager's Office, who's been at multiple of our meetings and had also been guiding us, council member Rodriguez for her insights throughout the process, and of course, the community. As we noted, we've had a couple of great stakeholder meetings. So 15 to 20 slides here, we'll move quickly, give everyone a great update on where we're headed. So this is a, this gives you the context, as Jonathan mentioned, the Floyd Casey future development to the south there of the project, the existing track and field, and then this beautiful blank canvas to a certain extent of open space that we have the opportunity to develop here for the city. Want to just peel back a little bit. If anyone came out to any of the engagements, you saw a lot of this content. This is a bit of how we move through a park design process. This is our analytical investigation where we're going to look at the site, both ground-truth it with our feet, but then look up like a bird and really explore the different elements of the site to understand the most appropriate locations to put programming, programming being playgrounds, lawn areas, trails, et cetera. We did do a really exciting deep dive into both the history of the site, the history of the community, and the history of Waco. That's really important to telling the story of this project as we continue to move from a vision into documentation and making sure that we're continuing to recognize that history for the, for the region. I won't spend too much time on here, there's a lot of, there's a lot of words here, but I do want to touch on some of the big goals that we've been working on with the community, which Jonathan touched on as well. But the idea of creating a destination, establishing a park as a must-visit destination within the city of Waco, celebrating history and culture, you'll hear us say that multiple times throughout the process, as well as when we come back during documentation, but how can we honor the history of the neighborhood, distinguish the park's identity, utilize regional materials, and establish the site as a unique trailhead and corridor reflecting its distinctive character? Inclusion will be a big part of this park, we're going to talk about that with the all-abilities playground, celebrating the community, mobility, of course, is a big item through our trails. Can't do a park without thinking about environment, and obviously, we just talked a lot about environment and water and context, and then coming back to ideas of art and economies within the project. This is just a quick infographics, which we pulled out from our online survey, so I'll touch on the engagements in a minute, but along with the engagements, we did have an online survey where we had over 350 responses, and this is a series of metrics that goes into the project booklet that again, goes into how we develop the park over time. So jumping into the vision. We had two very exciting open houses, one on October 26th, where we had over 30 participants, and then that community survey, we called this the Values Workshop. So this was before we drew anything, before we came up with any designs, we had a series of images where we were just getting feedback, we had some coloring tools for kids that came out. And then Community Open House Two, which some of you might have come out to, we had two overall framework plans, which were basically program diagrams for the full site, over 30 participants, again, a community survey, and we had everyone weigh in on the items that they felt were most desirable for the project. We took those ideas and we put that together into what you're seeing here, which is the updated framework, and then I'll flip in a second, not yet, to the illustrative plan. But just very briefly from left to right to touch on a couple of the elements we're looking at. There's an existing parking lot that we'd like to improve, we'd like to redefine some additional overflow parking, future drop-off. There will be some energy spent to enhance the existing track and field. We're going to do a little bit of work with some sports courts, with the tennis ball and the basketball that you can see up there above the existing building. We want to put a bridge across the existing channel there, the Waco Creek, as well as some restoration for Waco Creek. And then as you get into what we're calling the heart of the park, a new parking area, two new access points, a big, beautiful, inclusive, all-abilities playground, which I'll touch on in a minute, an arrival court, a small wetland pond where we can capture water and ideally reuse it for irrigation purposes, and then a big expansive great lawn and flexible lawn with a series of small pavilions for picnicking. And then as you continue on, we get to Bell's Park, where we'll have some improvements to the baseball field, new parking and some additional picnic areas. This is the overall illustrative, what we showed you a minute ago was kind of the breakdown of the programming, but you can start to see how that landscape comes out with new big shade trees. We'd like to have some very large trees that come out here so we can get the shade during that big summer heat that we have in Texas. But again, just moving from left to right, you can see the track and field, the new sports courts, excuse me, the bridge, the wetland pond, arrival plaza with restroom facilities, large all-abilities playground, beautiful lawn, and then continuing to Bell's Park. So a few graphics, want to bring you through it three dimensionally. This is just an image, again, remember we're at a visionary level, we still have multiple months to define this design and document the detailing. But an arrival feature here of a splash pad, a food truck area in the background, you can see a great lawn there with the idea that you could set up a small stage to host community events in the background, maybe some small gardens in this area. We want to be very sensitive to gardens and maintenance over time, but this would be a key area to potentially do that. The all-abilities playground became one of the main features very early on. We heard very quickly from the community how important this was, the idea that not only just the community, but that this could become a significant regional destination, a needed significant regional destination. We have an idea, and you'll, you'll hear this a little bit more with the Heritage Trail, but the idea of pulling inspiration from the local community and using that to define the overall story of the project and the way that we detail and utilize materiality throughout the project. And so here are just some of the images we started to explore at this early visionary level. We did start to dive in and actually start sketching what this all-abilities playground can become. Again, long way to go on this, lot of an additional community feedback needed, but the idea of having an activation motion zone, of having a nature play zone, the idea of bringing art and music out into the project, and then shade, lots and lots and lots of shade. And then just a quick image of some of these early ideas that we were exploring, the idea of color and using the materiality from our inspiration. We'll have a series of trails throughout the site, large trails where you can come out and run multiple miles that loop back in on themselves, a series of major trails that would be concrete or asphalt, and then potentially some smaller crushstone trails that get you a little bit closer to. that get you a little bit closer to the creek edge and, and nature. We've spent a good amount of time exploring and understanding opportunities of how we can improve the existing track and field complex. We do believe there are a variety of, of opportunities that can exist within our budget that we're looking at, improving bleachers, redoing the track surface, redoing the interior artificial turf, a small potential plaza, looking at lighting, scoreboards. We've got a lot to dive into to continue there, but we do feel that there is a priority to improve that facility. And then a few more images, here would be that beautiful lawnscape healing up to the background, the potential idea of having a stage in the background, integrating an art element from the local community. On the left side of the screen there, from our angle, would be the playground, on the right side, a picnic grove, the idea that you would have a big enough promenade around it to set up market tents throughout. Everything we're doing needs to think about seven days a week activation, especially the idea of having big events every weekend or small events. And then thinking about that wetland pond, again, something that can capture slow storm water, but the idea that we could also reutilize it for irrigation purposes, integrating local stone materials from nearby, bridging over it, and creating not just a functional amenity, but an environmental, educational amenity for school groups to come out and learn about these wetland stormwater facilities. We are definitely looking at creek restoration, there's obviously a lot of opportunities there. We wanna be very sensitive to clearing out invasives, working through the erosion and bridging across it. No big concrete channels, just thinking about how we can utilize natural materials to help that creek over time, which will continue to have big water flows through So that's the park. We do have one slide here, we just wanted to touch briefly, we, we are very excited to be having conversations about the Hispanic Heritage Trail element that's gonna provide a cultural trail connection through the new development into the rec facility and create that moment where there will be a series of breadcrumbs that talk to the local community through signage and wayfinding, and creating just a safe route throughout that area.
Thank you, and we're able to take any questions, of course, and what you can see, a lot of excitement that we have, the cultural components, the educational, the inclusivity, the connections, this is a dynamic project, we're excited to be working on and happy to take any questions or comments.
No question, I just wanna say, thank you Jonathan, and thank you for coming and, and making this presentation. This is so exciting for me and for the community, especially the Hispanic community, we, we've never had this opportunity before, so I'm real excited about it. And thank you Jonathan and city staff for, for even coming up with this and, and giving me the opportunity to help. And as I said before, and recognize my two folks that are here, my two ladies that are here that are on the task force, I'd be remiss if I did not name the other guys that are on the, the task force, and I wanna mention Louis Garcia, John Montes, and Vidal De Leon. And also Lisa from the City Manager's Office that has been there with us, and Jonathan as well. I appreciate it all, I'm real excited about this, I don't know if you can tell it or not. But this is really an opportunity for not just the Hispanic community, but the all-inclusive park, we're real excited about. This is a need that is very, it's very needed here in Waco, and we're glad to be a part of bringing this all-inclusive park into the park that we're redoing at Floyd Casey. So, thank you staff, thank you to the City Council, Mayor, Jonathan, especially you, you've been sitting right there with us. And our, our task force is gonna continue meeting, cause we have a lot of more work to do, and we're all excited about it. So thank you all for this opportunity.
I wanna thank Councilmember Rodriguez for her leadership in this. This is very exciting. I, I know I went to the last football game there at Floyd Casey in December twenty thirteen, so this is a long time coming and utilizing this property. So thanks to members of the task force, thanks to Lisa, Jonathan, and our architect here in getting this moving. I, I don't live too far from here, I walked to that game ten years ago, and so I'm looking forward to my family being able to take advantage of this. I, the only question I had is, it sounds like this'll, based on the renderings that involve a lot of tree planting, is that what you're expecting, which is great?
Yes.
But I wanted to confirm that.
Yes, absolutely. Any, any of the paths are gonna wanna have a good amount of shade on them. I think human comfort in Texas becomes one of our biggest aspects with park design, so that'll be really important to get some nice sized shade trees. And then the playground will have a variety of shade trees and shade sales, it'll be extremely important to have shade there.
That, that sounds great and perfect for our needs, so thank you all.
I'll just make a quick comment, every time I see this, I'm impressed by the quality of this project and the, the beauty, and really the thoughtfulness that we're going through in the history and the culture and the community. It seems like you're hitting, as this thing comes to fruition, you're hitting on all cylinders on this deal. And then I'm, I will echo everybody's observations on, I appreciate Councilmember Alicia Rodriguez on, on getting this moving, and I'm happy to see Isabel and Elaine out here on that task force too. I know this is a, a big project that we've all been very excited about for a long time, and it looks like it's coming to fruition quickly. Good job.
And I'll just jump in and, and sort of echo everything that's been said, and it is always really exciting when, when you can have a say in, in what something as permanent, for lack of a better word, as this will look like, and so I, I'm proud to be able to sort of follow the lead of my, my colleagues up here and, and shaping what this looks like, and I, like Councilmember Holmes said, I'm, I'm so impressed every time we, we see something from this, and I'm really looking forward to what this looks like in practice and, and the, just the space it's gonna make and provide for so many people in our community, and, and like you mentioned, with the all abilities park, from our community and beyond, as an attraction as well. So, thanks for the presentation today, guys.
Super fast, thank you all for the presentation, you know, we appreciate the work that you do in advancing the mission and vision of this council. Alice, you've been talking about the inclusive park for a very, very long time, and so I'm glad that, that that is going to become a reality. The historical aspect and the honoring of the Hispanic heritage and culture in our community is one of those things that we must continue to protect, history that isn't shared is lost, and the things that we don't know about our community will, will be buried underneath steel and concrete if we don't lift them up, and so I'm, I'm very excited about that. I wanna give a shout out to whoever says shading was important, cause sometimes we, we have problems with that, and I know that this is going to be a, a wonderfully shaded facility, I know the other things in the city that need shading will be shaded soon, see how I did that? And, but the, in areas where, where we can enhance, I mean, a park is not a park without trees, and so, I mean, I, I, now the thing about it is, do we, are we planting aged trees, are we planting baby trees? Cause this takes time.
Big trees.
Got it.
Good answer.
Got it.
It'll be a mix, but we definitely wanna get some six inch, eight inch calipers in there, prioritize that for getting some immediate shade.
Awesome. Well, I'm excited, thank you. Oh, the, where the track is, right? Is that, I know that, you know, we use for summer track and we use it for those things, is the field used for something else too? Is it rentals and stuff?
So that is one thing we've looked at, we do see usage of the track area.
Right.
And from private schools, they use it for indoor, for like shot put.
Right.
Pole vault areas, we are looking at how to flex out that space. It was specifically designed as a track, so the configurations and the shape of the drainage of the field, that is something we're diving into.
Right.
To where can we host football games?
Right.
Soccer games, or at least practices, so we hit on that seven day a week aggravation that Connors mentioned.
Got it. Thank you.
Great work, thank you guys, appreciate it.
One more shout out, if it's alright. One of the team members helping the committee out is Sean Sutcliffe over at the library.
He's a resource guy, yes.
Yeah, he does amazing work.
He does.
And always liked to highlight, we've got a, kind of a historian on, on the library staff over there that really is contributing to authentic places, so kudos to Sean as well.
I forgot Sean, we turned to him for all the research. Thank you, Sean.
He likes to stay behind the scenes.
He does.
So, I'm gonna pull him out of his comfort zone a little bit. We, Council, we would like to give you a chance to take a break prior to your executive session, but one thing I wanted to ask before that is, we had a presentation scheduled for I thirty-five aesthetics. We included the presentation within the packet, and so as you look at that, or already have looked at that, if you feel like we're off target, if you'll just get some feedback back to me individually, and we'll, we'll handle it that way. That way we can keep you on schedule here this evening. Mayor, it's over to you.
All right, are there any? I just have one quick question on that, the, what is, how does the resolution read that we're approving relative to the aesthetics, or is there one?
The resolution with Kim Lee Horn would approve them to, to design the actual conceptual aesthetics that you're seeing in your packet. I would, I would propose we keep that.
Yes, agreed.
And if you have, if we need to modify aesthetics, we can incorporate that into the work of Kim Lee Horn.
Thanks, thanks Bradley. That's all I had, Mayor.
Are there any requests for future agenda items? Now we will recess the work session and reconvene regular, regular session for executive session as read into the record by the City Secretary at five twenty-four P M.
Given that the City Council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions, attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one point oh seven one, ordinances regarding safety at intersections, possible settlement of claims regarding damage to, to the Cameron Park pedestrian bridge, personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one point oh seven four, city manager, Bradley Ford, municipal court judge, Robert Garcia, city secretary, Michelle Hicks, C attorney, Jennifer Ritchie, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one point oh seven two, and economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five point, five five one point oh eight seven. We are now in executive session.